Call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Members, you have before you a proposed agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Do you motion that we approve the agenda?
Motion.
All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. Okay. We have the March 13 minutes that have been mailed and are before you. Any discussion? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. They are approved. Let's see. Do we have council members who would like to be heard prior to the onset of the rest of the agenda? Council Lady Johnson, would you like to be heard now or later? Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Clifton, and esteemed Commissioners, Council colleague, Councilman Hunt, and former Councilman and Commissioner Ponder. Thank you all for the recommendation from the staff on BL 2012-302, which is number nine on the agenda, 74-79P009. I'm very pleased with the work that the staff has done in moving forward this bill. I ask for your approval of the staff recommendation. There is an amendment that has been found with the Metro Council, and John Cooper has already drafted that, and that will be placed on the agenda on the third reading. And so with that, I just want to say that this has been a very long process for the community. We do have a few folks here from Nashville Village who will be speaking today, but this did not develop lightly. It developed with a lot of work to ensure that we remain, that the integrity of the Nashville Village PUD remains and that the surrounding parcels within Nashville Village remain consistent with this particular parcel. So again, I just ask for your approval today of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Todd, would you like to be heard at this time? Councilman Holloman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Jason Holloman, District 24, and I just want to raise a comment on behalf of some of my constituents as to item number five, which is the One City rezoning. This is right on the border of my district and Council Lady Langster's district. I-440 is the separating boundary between the Sylvan Heights residential area and what's planned to be developed into the One City. The concern that several of my constituents have that live in the rapidly evolving Sylvan Heights area and particularly what's been come to known as Nevada Heights, which I'm sure most of you are familiar, the very modern houses that are there along the edge of I-440, and those are developing and creating a lot of infill growth in that area, which obviously I think that particular neighborhood and my adjacent neighborhood of Sylvan Park and West Nashville as a whole sees as a really strong positive. The concern that these folks that live in Nevada Heights have is that as One City develops, some of what's proposed to be developing will actually take away the view shed that these homes have of downtown. There are approximately 40 lots that are either already built or plan to be built, and I don't think the issue is really just about those particular 40 homeowners, but what those properties developing in a high-end way that we've seen them develop means to the rest of that neighborhood in terms of quality of development as well as to the Charlotte corridor. I've worked with a couple of my constituents, and I know that they have had conversations with the One City folks. I think they are very understanding of what rights One City has already and their desire to build the tall buildings. And I should say at this point, I have not had the opportunity to talk with the developers or with Council Lady Langster, but in the last couple of days, they've come to me, and so I wanted to at least put this on your radar. I think ideally what the residents in the Nevada Heights area would like to see is some of the FAR transferred off of what's identified on your proposal as, I believe it's Lot 7, and transferred more up towards the corridor, so that you had a lower building there in the residential view shed, and if you built up towards the corridor because of the change in topos, you're not going to block the view shed from the rest of the neighborhood if you move that up on the corridor. I think the other benefit to that is that we're getting more of a density on the corridor as opposed to push further back into the development, which I think is another positive. So, and I'll say with one more caveat, that the residents over there recognizing knowledge that the request today is to go from 12 stories to 15 stories, and the existing 12 stories that is permitted on that lot today substantially wipes out the views if it's built already. They recognize that, but there are some homes that will be impacted at 15 that aren't impacted at 12, and since they come for a further request, this seemed like the best opportunity to say, is there a way to reconfigure the site to achieve what everybody wants? And again, I think the One City development as a whole is something that's seen as very positive to this neighborhood and also to West Nashville. It's just a matter of whether we can strike a balance where everybody wins, and I do think that's possible. So, that's my comment for now, and I hope to have further dialogue with the applicant and my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Todd, would you like to be heard now or later? Okay, great. All right. Moving on to a couple of items, we have other business. The first dealing with the Nashville Next Resource Team update. Jennifer.
My name is Jennifer Carlet. I'm the Assistant Director of Planning at Metro Planning Department, and I'm going to present your update on Nashville Next today. Today, we're going to focus on the resource teams that have been a critical part of the Nashville Next update. And you know, as you heard from Tiffany last time, that we've done a lot of community outreach in traditional and in non-traditional ways, but we've also recruited Nashvillians with topical expertise in these areas to serve on resource teams during Nashville Next. A list of the members can be found on our website at NashvilleNext.net. The purpose of the resource teams is to help the Steering Committee and the community understand the trends that Nashville's going to face in the next 25 years that we need to respond to if we're going to be successful. They also are going to help us to develop goals and policies and actions in light of those trends and of the community's vision for the future. The resource teams will help us to harness the tools we have at hand, such as land use, transportation, and infrastructure, and other policy decisions to meet the goals of the community. And then finally, they'll be kind of the vanguard in leading implementation after the adoption of the plan. Here's their primary work. Last summer and into the fall, they spent quite a bit of time identifying major forces, trends that are impacting Nashville's future. Right now, they're in the middle of coming up with some growth and development scenarios and as well as goals and policies that the community at large will respond to and be able to comment on this summer. And then after the community has commented on those goals and policies and determined a preferred scenario for growth, then the resource teams will reconvene this fall to flesh out their goals and policies and some actual action steps, short, medium, and long-term actions that we can take as a city to reach our goals. In terms of the driving forces, the resource team's first task was to understand the dynamics that are impacting Nashville, identify key trends, bring some different perspectives to the process. So as an example, the Economic and Workforce Development Team spent a fair bit of time talking about our labor force in the future, given that we're going to have the retiring baby boomers and Nashville, like many other cities, is expected to face a labor shortage. So then they turn in their goals and policies to thinking about how we retain our current graduates, how we bolster our current education system, and so on and so forth to make sure that we have the workers for the jobs. Right now, the resource teams are focused on their goals and policies, and they're taking their understanding of these driving forces and creating goals and policies. During this phase, the resource team will also respond to the three growth and development scenarios that are being proposed and bring kind of a qualitative assessment of should we grow in this way or another way, and what will it mean for economic and workforce development? What will it mean for children and youth and education? So that's a brief update on where we are with the resource teams, and we'll be back in a couple of weeks. I believe we're going to talk about, can you remember the topic for that one, Ray?
No, Community Plan Update. Oh, no, the next one is the Engagement Process for Scenarios.
For this summer. Are there any questions on that?
Questions, Commissioners?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next item of business is a presentation regarding 4,000 Hillsborough Pike and the Green Hills UDO, and that, I believe, is from Doug.
I was just going to give some brief comments before Andrew Collins actually does the presentation and kind of explain, because I realize this is an unusual process, that we've asked the Commission to allow staff to present this matter. But as the Commission's all aware, you've received a number of communications from the public, both for and against this project, and that I know a lot of those communications talked about how staff was interpreting the policies, the UDO, and with the aspects of this particular project. And so we simply asked the Commission, and we certainly appreciate you all indulging us, the opportunity to explain both to the Commission and to the public how we evaluated this project against the policies and the regulations of the UDO. But I'll leave it to Andrew to cover the details of it, but again, we really appreciate this opportunity.
Doug, this is a matter on for explanation from staff for further understanding of the community and the Commissioners. It's not on for action on our part today. This is simply...
It's already been administratively approved by the Director, and as with all administrative items now, it's on the list of administrative items that you will vote on to approve those administrative items that have been approved since the last meeting.
But this is not a public hearing?
But it's not a public hearing. No, sir, it's not a rezoning, nor is it a policy change, the type of items that you normally see a public hearing on.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Andrew Collins with the Metro Plan Department. As Doug mentioned, we're going to take a few minutes to present an overview of the administrative approval for the 4,000 Hillsborough Pike project. The project is a by right development as it meets all the standards of the UDO and base zoning, and is proposed to be developed under the property's existing entitlements. The final site plan was administratively approved on March 20th of 2014 and is located at the southeast corner of Hillsborough Pike and Richard Jones Road. It complies with the Green Hills UDO and base zoning as applicable. The project itself consists of 2.67 acres with a mixed-use building, including four stories at the street, with restaurant retail on the ground floor, with commercial and office space above. A multifamily residential tower component with a maximum of 17 stories is also included, as well as a below-grade parking structure. There are 307 multifamily units, approximately 78,000 square feet of office space, and approximately 18,000 square feet of residential, of restaurant and retail space. The project complies with the standards of the Green Hills UDO and SCR-based zoning, including height, build-to-line, floor-area ratio, architectural standards, parking, and landscape, among others. Specifically, we've had some requests from the public regarding the building height, so we want to run through the exact standards the project is complying with regarding height. The proposed building height along Hillsborough Pike is just under 60 feet and is just under 58 feet along Richard Jones Road. 60 feet is a maximum permitted height along both street frontages per sections B5 and section C2C1 of the Green Hills UDO. Section B5, maximum height, the maximum building height at the build-to-line on Hillsborough Pike is 60 feet and 48 feet along Richard Jones Road. And section C2C1, exceptions to the building height. At a side-street intersection with Hillsborough Pike, the 60-foot building height is permitted to turn the corner, a distance of 100 feet along the side-street, in this case, Richard Jones, plus an additional 25 feet for each additional floor above the maximum height that is from bonus space incentives. There are 13 such floors in this project, equating to 425 feet, of which the 60-foot building height can turn the corner and run along Richard Jones frontage. Therefore, the entire 205 feet of Richard Jones building, building frontage is permitted to be 60 feet in height based upon these standards. The tower component of the building is connected to the street, street frontage portion via an underground parking structure, which serves as the foundation for the entire building. The building height of the residential tower itself consists of an 11-floor section, 10 stories with a rooftop deck, and a 17-floor section, 17 full stories, through the use of the residential bonus space incentive B12 and section C2C3. Section C2C3, exceptions to building height. Maximum building height may be exceeded, provided all floor space on any floor above the maximum height is bonus space from the use of incentives, and each additional floor above the maximum building height is setback at least 10 feet from the floor below it. For example, two additional floors will have a total setback of 20 feet, so 10 feet for each floor. Section B12, residential floor space exemption. To encourage the inclusion of mixed-use buildings, the floor area designed and built for residential use may be excluded as floor area for the purposes of calculating floor area ratio. The tower complies with the height standards. All proposed floor space above the maximum height is bonus space from incentive B12, residential floor space exemption. These additional floors are setback over 130 feet, 10 feet for each of the 13 floors above the maximum building height of 60 feet at the build-to-line, and is thus the minimum setback for a 17-story building on the subject property. The red line on the graphic illustrates where that setback line is. We have also heard some comments from the public regarding the amendments to the UDO itself, so I want to briefly run through those quickly here. The Green Hills UDO was adopted in August of 2002, and at that time included the exceptions to the building height, section C2C1, Point 2 and Point 3. All of the amendments to the Green Hills UDO each went to the Planning Commission, had three council readings, including two opportunities for public hearings, one at the Planning Commission and one at the second reading at council, all of which were open public processes. The amendments to the Green Hills UDO themselves, in May of 2003, the residential floor space exemption was added, which exempted residential floor space from FAR calculations for mixed-use buildings. In March of 2007, property was added to the UDO, and May of that year, signed standards were made mandatory. Also, in May of that year, property was added to the UDO, and in January of 2009, property was again added to the UDO. To conclude, the by right final site plan dated March 17th, 2014, was administratively approved on March 20th, 2014. The final site plan complies with all applicable standards of the Green Hills UDO and zoning code. The final site plan was also reviewed and approved by metro agencies, including Metro Public Works, the Roads Division, Traffic and Parking Division, Metro Water Services, Metro Stormwater Division, and Metro Fire Marshal's Office. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do Commissioners have questions? All right. Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I think this brings us to items for deferral and withdrawal.
There are two items on your deferral agenda today. Item number two, 2014 CP 00001, LUPA translation to CCM policies. This is a request to amend the Bordeaux, Whites Creek, Donaldson, Hermitage, Old Hickory, Downtown, East Nashville, Green Hills Midtown, Jolton, Parkwood Union Hill, South Nashville, and the Southeast Community Plans by translating LUPA land use policies to CCM land use policies. It is staff's recommendation that we defer this item to the April 10th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Also on the deferral agenda, item number 12, a contract between the Nashville Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and Gresham Smith &amp; Partners for Professional Services related to the conduct of the State Route 109 Access Management Study. It is staff's recommendation to defer this item to the April 10th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Members, you've heard the request for deferral on these. Is there a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Easily deferred. And we seem to have a consent agenda.
Yes. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. For the items on the consent agenda, a notice to the public. The items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or of the Commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number one, 2014 S 037001, 507 Moore Avenue. A request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 507 Moore Avenue, zoned R6. It's staff recommendation to approve with a condition. Item 3A, 2014 CP 010001, Green Hills Midtown Plan Amendment. A request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan to change the land use policy from single-family detached-in-neighborhood general policy to T4 urban neighborhood-evolving community character policy for property located at 1209 Hawkins Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 3B, 2014 SP 014001, Hawkins Street Town Homes. A request to rezone from R6 to SPR zoning for property located at 1209 Hawkins Street to permit up to four residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Commissioners, we're also adding item four to the consent agenda. It's 2014 Z 005TX 001. A request to amend Chapter 1740 of Title 17 of the Metropolitan Zoning Code zoning regulations pertaining to the zoning application fees and public hearing costs for amendments to the official zoning map initiated by a member or members of the Metropolitan Council. It is staff's recommendation to disapprove. Item number six, 2014 Z 020PR 001. A request to rezone from R20 and RS20 to RS30 zoning for various properties located along Iroquois Avenue, Iroquois Court, and Sunnybrook Drive west of Estes Road, requested by Council Member Carter Todd, applicant, various property owners. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number seven, 2014 Z 022PR 001. A request to rezone from RS5 to RM20A zoning for property located at 1041 West Greenwood Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number eight, 2005P 009001, Auto Masters Amendment. A request to amend the commercial PUD overlay district for property located at 3101 Nolansville Pike, zoned CS, to remove a section of Amendment 1 that states that, quote, "No signage shall be allowed other than that currently in existence and is located upon the brick building," end quote. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 10, 2014 NHC 002001, Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Expansion. A request to apply the provisions of the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District to various properties located east of Gallatin Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. And under Other Business, item 18, to accept the Director's report and approve administrative items. Would you like me to recap the numbers?
Yes, if you don't mind. And folks who are here, if you have come and intended to speak on one of these and want to be heard, let us know.
The consent agenda includes items number one, 3A, 3B, four, six, seven, eight, 10, and 18.
So, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'm of approval of staff recommendation for those items listed on the consent agenda.
Any discussion among the Commissioners? All those in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. All right. All of those items have been approved. The staff recommendations on each of those have been approved, so if that's why you're here, you're welcome to stay, or you can leave now.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ This is in a T5 or urban center mixed-use neighborhood policy. The policy supports an intense mixture of uses. The proposed amendment and the existing SP are consistent with the policy. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all staff conditions.
This matter is open for public hearing. If you are here in support of this, and if you're the applicant, please come forward at this time. Mr. White, as you know, you'll have up to 10 minutes to make your presentation, and can reserve up to two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the outset, I would like to ask for the two minutes for rebuttal. To the members of the Commission, my name is Tom White. I represent the applicant in this matter. One thing I want to comment about the outset is this particular project is in the Councilmanic District of Edith Taylor Langster. She has written a letter down here, which came to the staff and should have been distributed to everyone, where she is totally supportive of the project. She has been involved with this rezoning from the outset, as was mentioned by Jason Swagert, continues to be involved. My client has spent a tremendous amount of time with her. As of the time of her letter, she had heard no opposition from any constituent of hers. We've heard some comments raised by Councilman Holloman, which we will address here in a minute. With respect to the proposal itself, as was indicated, the request for the amendment is supported by the staff. It's consistent with the policy. And basically, as I understand, the issue this before the Commission today is, as indicated by Councilman Holloman, currently there's 12 stories allowed throughout the project. There's a very significant amount of land in this entire area, this MUI, all of which allows 15 stories. The staff presentation can include that if need be for reference, but not only is there 12 as a matter of right within one city right now, but in addition, there's a great deal of property in that area that could go to 15. Again, the staff can confirm this. When my client first made the application some three years ago, the staff actually advocated going to the 15 stories, which is consistent with MUI in this area. At the time, the client didn't think that was necessary. I think everybody's aware of what's happened in the midtown area over the last three or four years. These are areas that were not all that viable. They've become incredibly significant to the city. As is mentioned in the staff report, this T5 MU area is an area that is intended to be among the most intense areas in Davidson County. Includes the county's major employment centers, representing several sectors of the economy, including health, finance, retail, the music industry, and lodging. That's exactly what this site is all about. When the client made the request for the amendment, we would always start with the district council person first to gauge the temperature there, as I've indicated, not when we first met, six months ago, but as of the writing of the letter, which the council lady has sent down here, which will be confirmed to the staff, if you don't have that in front of you. There had been no opposition to it. I heard the comments, again, made with respect to persons that live on the other side of 440, and I think the Commission has to be extremely sensitive about a doctrine about view shed, where someone wants to claim that at some point they could see in a certain direction, and that now something's being proposed that would obstruct that view in some way, shape, or form. If interpreted literally, that basically shut down development. And indeed, the very quality houses that I now know are built on the other side of 440 certainly obstruct the view of those that are further west from them. I mean, that's the way that it works. So, I think it's something that this Commission has to decide, but I don't know anything in land use law that would ever allow a sacrosanct view shed. That would clearly be something that would be incredibly difficult to enforce. And years ago, as most of the members of this Commission understand, there was basically a land use law in this community, as in other communities, that no building downtown could be taller than the state capitol. Obviously, that's something that was not practical to be done for a great number of years ago. It's the same doctrine that applies here. If you're going to have an intense urban development, Nashville clearly has become the, quote, "its" city. You have to have developments like this and the quality of this. And as I said, you can look at the state capitol now, which is a wonderful historic building. It's surrounded by some real treasures in this city, all of which are significantly higher. So, view shed is a doctrine that I don't think can be practically applied to prevent what's being asked for by my client. We'd respectfully ask that it be approved. And again, at some point, I wish some of the Commission members would ask the staff to look at the other areas here that are MUI, all of which allow 15 stories as a matter of right. We'd appreciate your consideration, your approval, and I ask you to remember that, if interpreted literally, a view shed doctrine, even on a limited basis, could be incredibly devastating to land use rights. Thank you for your courtesies.
I'll be quick. Good evening. Ryan Doyle, General Manager of the project at One City. Just a few other comments. We are obviously aware of the height concerns from a few of the neighbors across 440, and we've spoken with a few of them, a few of which are actually here this evening. Our amendment does not request an increase in our existing approved FAR. Our plan continues to have the potential for close to 4,000 jobs just on our 19 acres, let alone the other densely zoned properties around us. So, this height amendment provides us design flexibility to approach our density targets while retaining close to five acres of our 19 acres that we own for green space, and that's public green space as an amenity to the neighborhood. And lastly, I'd just like to say we're eager and excited to bring those amenities to the neighborhood and really continue to build the momentum of the Charlotte corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude the case of the applicant?
It does.
All right. At this point, we'll hear from members of the audience who have come to testify, to speak in favor of this proposal. If you would come forward at this time, if there are any. Okay? If there are people here to oppose this proposal, this is the time to come forward and present your comment. The... Each person testifying other than the applicant with the aggregate testimony, it gets up to two minutes of testimony each, if you'd give us your name and address.
I'm Troy Heathcock. I'm a general contractor, home builder. I've got three lots in Nevada Heights or Sylvan Heights, and I'm currently building two contemporary homes up there. And the neighbors up there have worked together for the last 10 years trying to create a new, unique neighborhood in Nashville. Everybody's worked together to respect each other's views, and One City sounds like a great project. We're just asking that they continue to work with us like we've worked with each other this past decade. And obviously, taking away the views completely would impact our property value significantly, would negatively impact the look and feel of the neighborhood. And so, we're just asking that you not grant the approval to increase to 15 stories. And we ask that they limit the taller buildings to the locations closer to Charlotte. And that would not impact what we're trying to do in Nevada Heights.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Beecham. Just a resident, not a developer, not an attorney, but I can at least speak to the fact that, like Troy said, this is going to kill our view, and that's the reason we bought the house. I can say that it's probably worth to me about $200,000 on a loss. That's just me, multiply that times a 40 or so other folks who are going to lose what they paid for dearly. One of the points made by Mr. White was that the houses further west, we blocked their view. Those houses weren't built for a downtown view. They were already there years ago. Every single one of those houses, the newer houses, is built facing downtown. That's the purpose of the house. And so, for this to block that, again, it's going to kill our view and kill our property value and make our reasoning for living up there... It's going to eliminate substantial amount of that. Secondly, with regard to the density, if they're looking for density, kind of like Troy said, building as tall the building as they want to further towards Charlotte doesn't hurt anyone. The houses that are a little bit lower on 33rd have no view as is. They're not going to be affected. So, if we can, again, work with them to get taller buildings by Charlotte and bring it down a little bit so that everybody wins in this situation. I know for a fact that the majority of the homeowners in Nevada Heights, Sylvan Heights, Sylvan Park are tremendously in favor of this. There's a lot of places that, from what we've heard, restaurants, all that, that we want to go to. And so, because of that, more than anything, we think it's advantageous to all parties involved to try to work together to keep our view, but also get One City what they're looking to do, and that's density. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Ted Pins. I'm also a resident of the area that they're speaking to on Nevada. And again, these buildings will dramatically affect the values as well as the view and view shed of that area. I believe there is some support written in Councilwoman Langster, but we're not in her district. We're in Jason's district, and of course, he's brought today the concerns that we have, and I think those have been echoed. I would state that as a resident there, at the very least, we're asking to work with them, as they've said, to bring the taller buildings to the front, but if that can't happen, at the very least, then I would strongly urge to disapprove the increase to 15 stories from 12.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm Jay McDaniel. Of the 40 lots that Councilman Holloman spoke of, I'm number one. Been there eight years, and I'm very excited about the redevelopment of Sylvan Heights neighborhood, very excited about our association that's growing just to the west of One City. I'd like to say that I'm a big supporter of One City, and the amenities that they're bringing, the improvements that they're bringing, all of that is in concert with what I see as the Charlotte Pike redevelopment. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Doyle, the representative. He's been very forthcoming, very hopeful in sharing his view. But I do have to rise in opposition of additional heights, and I do believe that there's a modified request that should be considered, should be put forward, and that is the staggering of the heights. I believe that all of the stakeholders can achieve positive results, and I really don't think there's a downside. When you look at the terrain, it's already been spoken to, there's roughly 40 lots that are kind of the anchor of this redevelopment on the residential side. I have to disagree with my friend, Tom, who I've known for many, many years. We've worked hard to make sure that all of these folks have a view, and anyone that is obscured is obscured, in fact, by the terrain on the backside of Nevada Heights, not as you go up the heights. So, I think that there's a core there that can simply help that entire neighborhood continue to develop as you go west. And I would ask that you not approve this rezoning request.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition? Declare the public hearing closed. It's up for rebuttal. You have up to two minutes, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, with the greatest respect, and we certainly have the respect for the investment people have put into these houses, much as we do for the respect for the One City people that have got a huge investment there, I just remind you all that there's a 12-story of right in the project right now. If you look at the map and you look at the areas that are identified as MUIA, you'll see how many other places there are as a matter of right can go to 15 stories right now. So, if you're talking about a view from those that are on the other side of 440, and there's a 12-story height that can be built right now, the difference between that and 15 is infinitesimal, as I think one of the speakers mentioned. If you're going to do 12 stories over there and you're looking from the other side of 440 over, that clearly is an impediment to their view. The 15 stories, the three on top of that, is basically insignificant. What I'd urge the Commission to consider is the staff recommendation, which is there's so much other in the area that's 15 as a matter of right. Ours is now 12 as a matter of right. Ryan Doyle has been a first-class representative of One City, even as the neighbors have said. He continues to talk to them. We'll continue to discuss issues with them as we move forward, but we're urging the Commission to approve this matter today and ask you to move it forward so we can get to the legislative process, which gets us to the Metro Council. But thank you for your consideration. No disparagement to any of the comments made by the neighbors. They've got an investment, much like we've got an investment. We certainly would understand if somebody builds somewhere around us in a 12 to 15 story. It's going to block a view from us. Look at some of the buildings on 31st and West End, which are built on elevations right now, much higher than this. That's what's there already. We appreciate your courtesies. We'd urge you to move forward on this matter today and let us take it to the Metro Council level. Thank you for your courtesies, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, we're now ready for discussion. I think I'll start down here with Andre. If you have comments, questions, thoughts?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I know there was some discussion of view sheds in his... I remember when I went to law school, you know, generally, view sheds was not a right, but this is a specific plan that we're changing. And I have a question for our attorney, I guess, on view sheds. Is there a specific right for a view shed, or what is the law on that?
Honestly, this is the first time someone has asked that question in a meeting, so I would have to research it and get back.
Maybe the staff has. Rick, you got any?
There are communities that have regulated view sheds after specific study and identification of specific public interest. I don't think I'm aware of a generic right to a view shed or familiar with cases where it's a generic issue. It would be something that would need to be identified and measures discussed in advance.
Well, and I know the area, it's... The grade kind of decreases across the street. I'm very familiar with the grade there. But I'd like to hear what my other commissioners have to say. It's a very interesting case. I mean, I think both landowners, this is a very important investment to these areas. So, I'd like to hear what my other colleagues say.
Mr. Hunter?
I was sitting here trying to picture exactly what was the meaning behind this request, and all of a sudden, it kind of occurred to me that it's kind of the difference between a 12-story gorilla and a 15-story gorilla. You're not going to be able to see around either one. So, you know, if the 12 is okay, the 15 is just looking a little bit higher. You still can't see the LNC Tower either way. So, I'd have to say logically, it should be approved.
Councilman Hunt?
Thank you. You know, I was... I'm familiar with that area. As a matter of fact, I spent some of my formative years in that particular area. The thought that I had when I go through 440 and when I discovered the houses that they were speak of, what is it, Nevada Heights? They appear to be, when I'm going down I-440, about 75 or 100 feet higher than I-440. It's way up on the hill, and I'm just wondering, if you had a sight line, what kind of vision would you hear and you have if you up on the hill like they are above 440? I don't understand the obstruction. Maybe I'm missing something, but I just know that those houses sit extremely high. The elevation on that... Those are homes way over One City and I-440. Unless I'm missing something. So, I don't see a really issue with, like my colleague said, whether it's 12 or 15 when you're sitting up on a cliff.
Let's ask the staff for a little bit of help on this. What we're talking about, though, is right now, there's a view downtown, and if they build a 12-story or a 15, depending on what the facts show, that might be cut off, is what the argument is. Not as it is now, but if you had the 15 stories just on the other side there.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just simply saying, we still got to consider that those homes sit very high above I-440 and One City. Now, it may obscure it, I don't know, but I know it's got to be something very tall for them not to be...
Like 12 or 15 stories, I guess, right?
Yeah. But what do you see now upon a cliff that where those houses are sitting? And I mean, it's up on the... Have you seen them?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty high hill.
I guess right now, they see the downtown skyline, and the question is... One question I had, if we could move on and ask the staff, is it correct from your standpoint that 12 and 15, in terms of the view shed, are about the same?
I mean, there is a difference, but, you know, I have no idea how tall their homes are, like what you see at 12, depending on how tall, where their windows are, and how they're designed, which way they're looking, and what 15. I mean, there's... There is a difference in height, but, I mean, 12 stories is pretty tall.
We've not seen a view shed analysis, if that's what the Commission's asking for. Right, so we really can't speak to whether 12 stories or 15 blocks or to what degree they block.
It seemed like Councilman's suggestion was that if this were not decided today, they could give more flexibility to figuring... flexibility to figuring out where to put it. That was an argument that he raised, but from what you know now, you couldn't really say much about if they had this going forward, would that make a difference in terms of 12 to 15? I guess it has to do with where they place things.
Yeah, where they place things. And again, the point that came up is that you have MUIA right just to the east of the property that permits 15 stories, and all through midtown there's 15 stories. So, you know, there are 12 stories right next door, they give 15 stories, probably going to block the view.
Commissioner LaCqua?
I think I remember... I think it's a difficult issue, and to do a height study might be helpful for the neighbors to see what they're really going to see. But I think that, as I recall, that policy over in that area inside of 440 is Charlotte is allowed by policy to go up to 22 stories. So I think we're going to see a lot of big development inside of 440 towards downtown on Charlotte, and I think that there is time with the public hearing, the council, and the public to work with the developer. If we... Even if we move it forward tonight, they can still discuss it at the council level. So I move that we approve it as the staff recommends it.
There's been a motion, and a second. Is there further discussion before we vote on the motion to approve?
Just one comment. Just a comment. I hope that the developer and the neighborhood can work together, can continue their conversation to... In locating, you know, any changes to minimize the blocking of the view.
It is possible to do a relatively simple, you know, sightline study, so that would probably be helpful so that everybody's not speculating on what it actually would be.
Other comments? If you're in favor of the motion, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Chair votes aye, and it is approved. So next order of business. This is number nine. Okay.
Yes, sir. All right. Number nine is a request to amend a portion of the Nashboro Village PUD overlay district. This request was deferred indefinitely in 2012 by the planning commission and by council. It's currently scheduled for the April 1st council public hearing. Staff is recommending disapproval as submitted, but approve with amendments and a substitute bill. Zoning is R10, and the PUD permits neighborhood commercial uses. Proposed amendment is to restrict uses, limit height, provide landscape and design guidelines. The last plan was approved in 1983 for Site 15. It included 23,275 square feet of neighborhood commercial uses. In May of 2012, the council member initiated a four-year PUD review. The planning commission found that the PUD was inactive on this... For this Site 15, but that it be maintained since it was consistent with the policy for the area. The policy is suburban neighborhood center. It's intended to enhance and create neighborhood centers that provide a mixture of uses serving area residents. The bill would prohibit the following uses: adult entertainment, pawn shops, flea market, transient lodging, warehousing, storage, automobile convenience, liquor store, bar, beer and cigarette market, grocery store, convenience drive-in market, and automobile repair. Generally, these uses to be prohibited would be consistent with the policy. However, we do not support removing retail use, as it's an appropriate use in a neighborhood center. Several of these uses, C, D, I, J, and K, are not defined in the zoning code. Since they're not defined in the zoning code, the zoning administrator... They would fall under retail uses, so the zoning administrator has indicated that if someone came in for one of these uses, or his interpretation would be that no retail is permitted since these uses were explicitly taken out, since they'd fall under retail. So our recommendation is that these not be included. Transient lodging is another one that's... It's not a retail use, but it's not in the zoning code, so that should also be taken out. Staff is also recommending that the additional uses be prohibited, and that's automobile parking, automobile sales new and used, automobile services, and car wash. The bill also provides some standards on parking, landscaping, buildings, and building standards. Staff has added language that would make... To make it more clear and also make it more enforceable, for example, when it talks about ample landscaping, saying, defining what ample landscaping is in the form of a landscaped seat buffer yard. In conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval as submitted and approval with staff amendment in a... With an amendment and a substitute bill.
Now, ready for presentation by the applicant? Or is that where we are?
The council lady.
Oh, that was... You are the applicant, and you've already given us your comment, so thank you very much. I think we've already...
So do I need to say anything?
No, unless you had something you wanted to add.
I do.
Okay, please do.
And I also failed to acknowledge former councilmen Ackers when I was talking a little bit, and Secretary Bernhardt as well. So, you know, sometimes when you get up here, you tend to not say everything you're supposed to, so I apologize for that. But in terms of this bill, we again support the staff recommendation. Nothing has changed in terms of what we're moving forward with with this bill. The new owners have not pulled any permits or approached me or the community about any plans of their purchase or their purchase from Vassland. As far as we're concerned, the work has been done on this bill, as you see by the timeline, and we are closing out the bill. We feel that the property owner is responsible for due diligence, and part of this is understanding the current legislation on the property. I spoke with attorney David Wainik, who bought the golf course, and we changed his parcel just the same as we're doing here, and he said that as an attorney, you know, even though he has to pay higher taxes due to that change, that we were well within our legal right to make the change on the PUD and update the PUD accordingly. So with that, I ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members... Other folks here who wish to speak in favor of this? If so, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gregory Pratchett. I live at Fairway Point of the Nashboro Village. I am here in support of the staff recommendation, and as a member of the Nashboro Steering Committee and a resident in close proximity to the PUD that's being considered today, we, as a community, have worked long and hard on these conditions, and I fully support Councilwoman Johnson's amendment, which supports the planning staff's recommendation. I, along with others, ask for your approval today of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people wishing to speak in favor?
My name is David Cool, and I live at 1000 Flintlock Court, which is just about within sight of this piece of property. I think I'm in favor of this, but I want to... I'm stating what I want to state here just to make sure that it gets on record, that those of us that live in this neighborhood and have lived in it for some time are concerned that whatever happens with this piece of property on this corner, that somehow we have got... We don't allow liquor or beer to be purchased and taken off-site on this piece of property, whatever the wording of any ordinance is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Any opposed? Please come forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Jamie Holland. It's a little awkward. I represent the property owner and get two minutes, so I'm going to try to be as quickly as possible. My clients have owned the property for less than a year, and as stated by staff, the property's on R10 with a PUD. The current site is undeveloped property. There's no fear to take away retail uses, which is what this bill promotes today. Matter of fact, it takes away retail uses that don't exist in the zoning code, when it's still undeveloped land. As a requirement of the PUD, the property owner to develop the property, they got to work with the community and the council member. They know that's a part and parcel of the process. They haven't approached that because they don't know what they're going to do with it, but they know that they don't want to lose their property rights peremptorily based on some unsubstantiated fear of the community and the council member. I also heard the council member talk about an amendment that she would like to put on the bill on third reading. We've never seen the amendment. We understand that staff has recommended some amendments, but we think it'd be fundamentally inequitable and unfair to recommend approval of a bill that the property owner hasn't seen. You know, at its core fundamentally, this is the government attempting to take away property rights of the owner, and I think that's fundamentally disfavored on the law. And with that, Mr. Chairman, in light of the time limitation, I take no questions.
I don't know that we have any questions yet at this time until we officially close. Are you asking for disapproval or deferral?
Disapproval or deferral, either one in the alternative. I just came on board a day and a half ago. I reached out to the council member unsuccessfully and would like more time to get that done, but I don't see any harm to the community or the council member, considering they've owned it since May of 2013, and the land's undeveloped.
Okay. Thank you.
Given that this gentleman represents a property owner, would it be unusual for us to allow additional time if he wishes?
I don't think we've ever done that, but it's a little unusual. Usually, it's the property owner who's bringing it, therefore they get 10 minutes. So I see what he's saying. That's... I think that's up to this commission. Are you suggesting we extend his time by three more minutes or something like that?
If... It sounded like he could... The applicant might wish to have a little more time.
Well, if there's no opposition, and with the understanding that we're not necessarily setting a precedent for future, why don't you take two or three more minutes, Mr. Holland, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the planning commission, as a part of the renewal of the PUD a couple of years ago, you know, in the PUD, it says the planning commission has directed the staff to work with the applicant to ensure that the development will contribute to the overall PUD by providing neighborhood services at an appropriate scale and design that also contributes to the walkability of the neighbor. This, in the recent update to the Antioch Priest Lake Community Plan, the special policy for this incorporated this recommendation, and there's no suggestion anywhere that the new property owners wouldn't meet that. And to get you to the specifics of this potentially proposed amendment that's in the staff report, there's an amendment to the caption. I think we all know that amending a caption to a bill is... Cannot be done. And with that, I'll conclude my comments there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Are there others here who wish to speak against the proposal?
The property owners are here because they're...
You said your thing. Great. Thank you. So the public hearing is closed. We'll start with... Start with Councilman Hunt. Do you have questions or thoughts for us?
No, not at this time, I don't.
Commissioner Ponder?
Nothing.
Commissioner G.
I just want to confirm with staff that the only amendment to the PUD is essentially a change in use, limiting the uses. Is that... Is that correct?
Well, it also has those design standards...
Oh, right.
...to follow. One thing I forgot to point out is that you guys all have a revised staff report at your desk. I apologize for not pointing that out at the beginning.
While you're taking a look at that, I wanted to ask the staff or our legal counsel about the specific question about caption, which I understand at the state level that you can't really amend a bill beyond its caption at the state level. Do you have comments about Mr. Holland's comment on that?
If I understand the question correctly, it is the question whether or not this board is essentially approving it before it has been filed and the amendment. If that's the question, then my response to the statement made by Mr. Holland would be that this board is doing is... And what it has actually been asked to do by the applicant is to approve staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove unless there is an amendment or substitute bill that would set out the conditions that they have set out in their staff report. So that's... It's kind of a unique situation in that respect. You can essentially approve staff's recommendation, which requires that there are amendments. You're not approving the amendment, and I think that was the statement that was actually made. You're not approving the amendment because the amendment is not before you. You're approving staff's recommendation. So the net effect is, if the bill is amended by the council in accordance with staff's recommendations for the project or the request, then it would only have to pass council by majority. But if it does not include those things, then the effect would be it would need 27 votes to pass the council. So I hope that has clarified.
Well, and also, the staff's recommendation would basically state that, I mean, the council would have to decide whether or not they could amend the current bill or would require a substitute new bill, depending on whether the amendments would impact the caption.
Right.
So the caption that we have is...
The caption of the bill.
Of the amendment.
Yeah, the caption I'm talking about is the caption of the council bill.
Right. And if it is generally... And I wouldn't presume to speak for Mr. Cooper, but what I have seen is that when it is... When the caption is broad enough and there's not an increase in the rights that may be given, that that is... That's okay if there's an amendment, and the caption would capture that. But if however it does increase that, then that's where there would be a problem with the caption.
So the determination of that is at council level, I think.
That's correct.
Ponder? Did you have?
Well, I guess I have a question for the... I guess for the applicant first, and maybe a question for the property owner. Have you been able to talk to the property owner about some of these uses? I mean, some of these seem, you know, quite understandable.
No, we talked with Vassland throughout the entire process. They sold the property, and they had the responsibility to share that same information with the new owner, and as far as we're concerned, we've done all of the work for the bill, and therefore I'm asking that we continue to proceed forward. We've already done that. We did our due diligence. We've spoken back and forth with the planning staff and previously with Vassland, and that's how we came up with the list that we did. The... We'd be happy to continue to move forward and work with the property owner, but at this time, I think that we have exhausted a lot of time with this bill, and we think that the staff's recommendation is appropriate. We made compromises. The reason why the retail uses were taken out was because they're not identified in the code. Now, there is another bill that is on first reading at the council that is going to try to separate out some retail uses. So in the future, when neighborhoods have specific issues where they may need to limit use of that retail in their community or their neighborhood, that's able to be done because it's not lumped in in the code as one retail use. So that is on first reading, but the bill that has now been filed at the council mirrors the staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess a question for the property owner. Are there specific uses that are being prohibited by this bill that the property owners oppose to being prohibited, or is it all of them?
Commissioner, all the conversation and exhaustion may be felt by the council member we property owners apologize for, but they were never a party to any of those discussions. And, you know, my involvement here is because, you know, they kind of fell blindsided... And, you know, my involvement here is because, you know, they kind of felt blindsided by it and trying to catch up with two years of history and a former owner to try to get our hands around everything that's going on. Because of the requirement that's in the PUD that they have to come to the planning staff and do those things that they want, you know, that's going to be part and parcel of it. They're not going to do anything that's inimical to the community because it's part of their requirement. So, you know, it's kind of a, this is kind of a solution looking to a problem. However, they don't want to limit themselves in the rights because the PUD permits neighborhood commercial, of which retail's included.
Thank you. So if I could, when you read the passage from the PUD related to working with the council member and the community, I thought it said regarding design issues, not uses. And so I guess my question is, are there uses on this list that the, that the property owner would be comfortable eliminating as an allowable use? And I see adult entertainment as one example.
What page are you on, Commissioner?
Sorry, I was just listening to what you had read.
Okay.
I'm not sure where the passage is in the PUD. I don't know if we have that or not regarding...
Why don't you pull up the prohibited uses that you went to?
No, it's the, no, it's the requirement within the PUD that...
When they do the project, what they have to, what view they have to go through when they propose a project, what's they actually propose one, is I think your question, right?
Right. The property owner's representative claims that they, the owners will be required to work with the council member and the commission and, or the community and the staff. And didn't you read that portion of the PUD?
I'm trying to find it. When the PUD was amended, the comments of this commission were included in it. And if, give me, just bear with me one moment. I'm going to read the paragraph in its entirety. "In March 2012, the council member initiated a PUD review of this site and it was found to be inactive. The planning commission recommended that Site 15 remain as approved as was consistent with the policy in place. Further, it was recommended when an application is received to develop this portion of the PUD, the planning commission directs staff to work with the applicant to ensure that the development will contribute to the overall PUD by providing neighborhood services at an appropriate scale and design that also contributes to the walkability of the area." The recent, "In the recent update to the Antioch Priest Lake Community Plan, the special policy for the site incorporated the planning commission recommendation." So not only is it in the PUD, it's in the community plan.
I guess the question...
Basically, staff would interpret that as when we received a site plan for development of this, that we would work primarily on the design. That's what this talks about, how it incorporates walkability and adds to that. It's what, not, I don't think there's anything in here that we would deal with use unless you, anybody, no, this is a, the wording deals with the design of the project.
Okay, so I guess the question back to the owner would be, and you may not be able to answer this right now, but whether some of the uses that are being proposed to be eliminated, whether the owner is willing to eliminate those from the...
Well, we'd first like to have a conversation with the community and the council member. You know, we've kind of been dragged here by fiat, if you will, and they don't have any indication of what it is they intend to do with the property at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. And then is this, there's a bill filed, so what's the schedule in terms of a deferral or a...
They need to make a recommendation tonight. It's on the April 1st public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
If we don't make a recommendation that can't go to the public hearing...
If you don't make a recommendation, it would require a suspension of the rules to have the second reading. If they have the second, then you could make a recommendation before third reading, but technically then, and the commission's recommendation will go forward. Technically, after 30 days, it's deemed to be approved.
You have anything else?
Just on that point, if there were, for example, a deferral to our next meeting, that's two weeks, so it would be 30 days.
There was a deferral, my understanding, and I know Doug and Carrie have both looked at this, my understanding is it's now scheduled to be heard at the first meeting in April. That is before your council, the commission's next meeting. In order for the council to have the public hearing under their rules, it would need a recommendation from the commission. However, they could waive that rule and hold a public hearing.
But I would point out that if you defer it, it will be back before this commission, before it goes to third reading, and then they could, and then third reading would still have to comply, assuming that this, that the commission recommended disapproval, then on third reading, they'd have to have 27 votes to pass it on third reading. So you'd state, your recommendation would still, still be before them, before third reading, if you deferred it to the next hearing. But while they're, while they're considering for second reading, it would have been deemed approved for that, for purposes of second reading at the council.
Thank you. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think for me, it just seems like, well, first of all, I think it's, we've seen this particular idea before. The only thing that I, I think that seems reasonable is that the actual property owners and the neighbors, the community, get together and talk. That's...
We will do.
Before, you know, before we make a recommendation, I mean, I, these uses seem like things that obviously the community wouldn't want. But I just think that in terms of being fair to property owners, that a conversation should happen. It's kind of before I vote on what we think should happen. And that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, I think that the work that has been done is clear and has made a lot of progress. Certainly has attuned more to what the neighbors are interested in and has gotten rid of some uses that are probably egregious to many people, or if not everybody, some of them in that particular area. But I do think in fairness to the property owner, for them to get to see the bill ahead of time, to get to have a conversation and discussion would be appropriate. And so if that means a two week, I mean, yeah, just a two week deferral to our next meeting, if that could happen, and I mean, we would, would we be asking for them to have a meeting and then come back with some new news of how the owner feels about it at that time? I mean, I just feel like if we're going to defer, it needs to be productive, and so we want to say what are we deferring? I mean, what we want to accomplish in those two weeks if we're going to.
We should launch that back up.
Well, I guess I'm trying to think about the process as well. The idea of having discussions at the commission level and the council level or the council level is all good. Our, our role here is to make a planning decision. I'm not sure what I think about the fact that it's relatively new owner. I would assume that they would have had conversations with the former owners and whatnot. But there's, I'm trying to figure out for me whether or not it makes sense for us to defer it in light of a very strong planning analysis of why this makes sense. Yes, Councilman Hunt?
Yeah, thank you. I just got a question. It seemed like this name, this name has come up on several occasions since I've been involved in this. How long have this discussion take place? I mean...
Let me try and clarify that, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
And it's not going to be perfectly clear.
It does.
This bill was originally introduced, the first bill, first reading of this bill, first reading. And I need to clarify something I told the commission. First reading was on November 13th, 2012, first reading. Then it was deferred, and it was reopened at second reading for the April 1st public hearing. As a result, 30 days have passed since the first reading, and the bill as it currently sits in limbo is deemed to be approved by this commission. Okay? And as Doug said, however, unless, if you get, if you get a recommendation prior to the third reading, that will be what the council considers. But as we sit here today, it's deemed to be approved. So they could, they could still hold the meeting April 1st public hearing, and then the third reading would be scheduled for April 15th. Right. And so that's, that's just kind of where it's at. And it seems to have been here a long time because it has. And it's gone through two owners in that, at least the original owner and a new owner since that time.
And those of us...
Thank you, Rick. That clears up a lot of things because I've, I've heard a lot of history about this. And what we're saying is we missed our 30-day window.
In a way.
Pretty much. Yeah, we had one like that last week, too. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments before I ask for a motion? Ponder?
I agree that this is a planning decision, and it's important to keep in mind. However, I do feel like as planning commissioners, we, we owe property owners the opportunity to weigh in, especially if someone else is trying to reduce the rights that they currently have, especially if it's, you know, the city trying to reduce those rights. So I think I would support a deferral, knowing that if the council suspends, am I right with this?
They don't have to.
They don't have to suspend.
That's right, they don't have to, no.
Okay, right, okay. So knowing that it would still go through second, public hearing and second reading with an assumed approval here, but giving the property owner and the council lady an opportunity to get together. And, you know, whether it will make a difference or not, by third reading, at least we'll have the opportunity to make, I think, a better judgment on this with, you know, input from the property owner.
All right. Is that your motion?
My motion is to defer one meeting.
Any discussion of that? And that doesn't hold up any, any action at the council? Under my understanding. All right. If you're ready to vote, all those in favor of that motion, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Hello, voted aye. Raise your hand if... Okay. All right. It's deferred for one meeting, but the plant, the public hearing goes on at the council level.
And I guess the intent of my motion, if it's not clear, is hopefully the owner and the applicant will get together and identify specifically if, if any of the proposed bill is acceptable to the owner or what parts are.
All right. We're now on number 11.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, do we need to determine whether the public hearing can be reopened, or can we determine that at the time?
I believe, I believe the, well, I said, I mean, if we're, if we're waiting to hear back about various meetings, I think that implies the public hearing has to remain open. Is that, do we need to do anything officially to do that? Doug?
Just declare it. Just declare which way you're going to...
Just direct it, yeah.
The public hearing will remain open for further input at that meeting. Okay.
If the commission can just take a slight recess.
Slight recess.
You just lost the court.
Okay.
Just for more...
Recession.
The request is to apply a neighborhood landmark overlay district to property located at 1627 Shelby Avenue, which is located at the corner of Shelby Avenue and South 17th Street. Staff recommends approval. All right, the subject property is Zoned R6 and all surrounding properties are also Zoned R6. The policy in the area is neighborhood general. The request would meet two critical planning goals. The first, to preserve historic resources, and the second, supports infill development. And the neighborhood landmark overlay district process is a two-step process. The first, which is before you this evening, is to apply the overlay if the, the property meets the criteria as laid out in the zoning code. The second part of the process would be to approve a development plan if the uses and the development plan fit the character of the neighborhood. So if the, the overlay is approved, then the applicant would have to come back with the proposed uses as well as any, any other criteria that, that would be needed in order to, to ameliorate the use for the area. All right. So the purpose of the neighborhood landmark district, it allows flexibility of uses with an approved development plan. It ensures appropriate scale and intensity of reuse of properties, and also it incentivizes preservation of historic buildings. So here we have the criteria as laid out in the zoning code. There are six. The first is that the property has to be a critical component of the neighborhood context. The second, retaining, in this case, that the structure is necessary to preserve and enhance the character. The third, the reason for the district is to protect and preserve the identified feature. The fourth, if the, the structure were to go away, essentially the uses permitted in the base district, which in this case is R6, so it would be one and two family dwellings would, would be what would come back into play. The fifth, in the community's and neighborhood's best interests, to allow a means of preserving the designated feature. And the final criteria, all of the provisions of the section have been followed. That really talks about the process for the development plan, design standards and so forth. So here we have a little bit of a history of the property that is before you this evening. The property at 1627 Shelby Avenue was purchased by Sally Simpkins in 1922. It did operate as a neighborhood grocery store from 1930 to the mid 50s and was sold in 1979. The property has been identified as worthy of conservation and historic zoning recommends approval. Here we have another, another view showing some of the art that used to be on the side of the, the property. And, and here is the current state of the building. You can see that the old siding has been removed. However, the owner has indicated that they intend to restore the exterior to include the original artwork. And as you can see, the, the structure is unique in that it includes a residence attached to a, to a traditional storefront. In conclusion, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. We're ready for a public hearing on this. Anyone in support of this, please come forward. And I have 10 minutes? The applicant first, of course, I'm sorry. You have up to 10 minutes. You may reserve two minutes of that for rebuttal.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for that. That was the material we supplied when we turned in our application for this. My name's Chris Hauser. My husband and I own this property at 1627 Shelby. We have, we've owned it for over a decade. We lived there for a while. We've rented it out to different folks, and we love what has happened with the East Nashville neighborhood. We love that it's come up over the years and in addition to beautiful historic houses that have been preserved and, you know, all the, the landmark overlays that are going on, the, you know, the rebuilding of them all, that there's unique retail, there's unique shops, there's unique just features about the East Nashville neighborhood that you don't find in Brentwood or some of the other, and that's part, in our opinion, that's part of the love we have of this neighborhood and have for a long time. And we want to see this building and commercial space, so it's a residence and a commercial space, used to enhance what's happening there. And we want to make sure that it doesn't turn into a gas station or a Kinko's or something like that. So when we approached Metro Planning and said we'd like to look at rezoning this from R6 to some kind of... from R6 to some kind of mixed use," because it is a residence attached to a commercial space, they suggested the historic overlay, because that would protect the structure, um, keep the historic relevance of it, um, and, uh, and, and enable it to be used as a, what we hope, a low-traffic, small retail space, so that it enhances that whole, uh, action that's happening in East Nashville now, which we believe is why people are flooding there, and, and property values are escalating, because people want to be able to walk to their local business. They want to be able to have neighborhood, uh, entities that aren't just residences. So, we, that's our goal, is to, uh, and to do that, we would like to improve the property by restoring the siding, keeping it, uh, looking like the original historic grocery store that it was. Um, we want to landscape and make it more beautiful, um, and we hope that only helps to increase property values in the entire area. So, that being said, we're hoping, too, that, that the, uh, overlay would lead us to a rezoning process that would protect and preserve the neighborhood, uh, you know, fabric, I keep saying that word, but, that, what it is now, and not change it, to protect it. So, even if we sold it someday, which we don't plan on doing, um, that somebody else can't come in there and, and put in a gas station, or a, uh, you know, strip club, or something, any, you know, like that. So, that's our intent. I recently, um, just today, actually, learned about some opposition, and I'm completely open to working with them. I want to say that publicly. Um, I've tried to say that outside, as we were all coming in, but we, I made an effort to walk around to all the, uh, immediate neighbors and knock on doors, um, from, and I did not get everybody, but from the people that I did get ahold of over a three-day attempt, um, different, uh, times of day. I, uh, had two people that were opposed, and the rest of the immediate neighbors directly behind, and to the side, and across the street. No one gave me any, uh, opposition. So, um, so I didn't, uh, hold any neighborhood meetings, and I sent out the appropriate notices with my phone number, and, um, and then another notice, which was the letter with phone number, and I didn't hear from anybody until this morning. And so, I, um, I'm, I'm, I just want to say that for that, I, uh, didn't know that there was opposition, uh, strong opposition, and I didn't know exactly what it was. Actually, one of the oppositions was, uh, parking. And so, we went ahead and talked about how we might address that. And should I save this for later, or should I just say it all now? Keep going?
Thank you for...
Okay. Um, so we talked to, there's a, there's a church across the way, so, right across the way. So, we talked to them, um, about if there was any, oh, well, first of all, the business that we proposed in the application is a small, uh, low-traffic, like, no more than two to four cars, retail space.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interrupt here, because I think it's important to understand, and Melissa pointed us out, this is really a two-tier process?
Oh, so we should do this later?
The, the first part relates strictly to whether or not this is a neighborhood landmark, the building itself, whether the building's important to try and preserve that. If that's decided, and it, and it, and that relates on to whether the neighborhood thinks it's important and all of that, um, then, there's a second process to decide what uses, if any, would be appropriate to go in there. That's a second process, and that would be when you talk about the site plan, when you talk about the parking, because whatever is done today doesn't guarantee any others. It's strictly, is this building important to save, nor does, does approval of this building give any approval for any specific use, or limited. So, it's, it's, it's important to understand it's a two, two-step process.
It is, and I do want...
It's not inappropriate for her to sort of counter what she thinks some of the opposition might be, though, so...
Well, and I, and I don't want to do that with an open, uh, heart, you know, just to say, "I'm, I'm suddenly aware, and I want to do what's right." Um, so, um, that being said, uh, you know, we can discuss all the zoning later, but it is a unique property, and as the owners of that property, we want to utilize it for what it was originally, and to, um, and we have tenants that are eager to help us do that in the right way. Um, yet, as a, you know, as neighbors, I, I'm hoping that this overlay will be the, the correct way to go about that, and that's, that's our wish. So, let me see. And I think I have, watching somebody else, if I need to come back up, I can come up later?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, we addressed the improvements. I addressed, uh, that we want to keep it from being something that it's not, hopefully that. But, uh, as far as the, uh, the criteria for a historic overlay, I think I cited, I didn't bring my own application with me, um, the, several of them that this meets, as far as keeping the structure intact, preserving, um, you know, the, I can't, do you have those handy?
We have it as part of our analysis, that the Historic Zoning Commission has identified this as worthy of conservation.
Okay. So, I don't need to go over that again. All right. So, I'll, uh, say thank you, and, uh, oh, thank you. Thank you. But, uh, we felt like it was a, um, worth preserving the, uh, original features. We thought that it was cohesive to the traditional neighborhood fabric. We thought that it met many of these. So, it's our, let's see. And we hope that retaining this original feature, and even bringing it back to its original historical glory, will, um, only help to reinforce the neighborhood's, uh, you know, unique character that is East Nashville and Lachlan Springs. Um, and that's it. I think it does embody the fact that East Nashville is a community with residents, and then, uh, little pockets of commercial space, and there she is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Are there other persons wishing to speak in favor of this proposal?
I'm Sharon Emerson. I'm a commercial real estate broker in Nashville. I live, uh, more importantly, I live on 1610 Eastland Avenue, and, um, I've certainly watched the neighborhood contract and grow, and, um, contract and grow. I've been over there 10 years, and my concerns in the neighborhood are what's happening to commercial structures. I have a sideline, um, concern, which is developers putting up homes that don't meet the, the historic, uh, overlay, the historic, um, enhancement of the, of the area. But, when, when I saw this, and, and I saw what they were trying to do, this is just another example of preserving the character of the neighborhood. Um, I certainly emphasize, you know, I, I have empathy for those that live next door to restaurants, and not live next door to high-traffic areas, Five Points. Certainly wish someone at 14th and Woodland would get rid of the gas, or the grocery store there and enhance it, but because of what they're proposing to do, and because of what they're going to do with the structure, and they're going to bring it back to some 19, 18th-century original characters, and because they're not going to allow, or, I mean, you...
One of those centuries.
One of those centuries, before my time. Uh, you know, I can appreciate what they're doing, and I just ask the commission to approve, uh, this overlay and approve the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's other folks who wish to speak in favor of this, come on, come on up now and line up behind each other.
Hello. My name is Laura Setron, and I am one of the new current tenants of 1627 Shelby Avenue. And although we are leasing the building, um, we wanted to assure you that we plan to be long-term tenants of the building. We want to sign a five- or 10-year lease. We definitely want to restore the building and add to the historic value of the neighborhood. We will ensure parking will not be a problem. We've already spoken with the Temple of Judah, which is a church across the street, and they've allowed us to use their parking lot for overflow on days except Sundays, of course. Um, we also want to make sure that there are no bars, restaurants, coffee shops, and things of this nature that would be able to open this space, nothing to disturb the residents. Um, we intend to keep it very low-traffic, and we're more than happy to work with our neighbors and address the concerns, as we would be overjoyed to be part of this community. We have moved from New York, because we are committed to investing in this community, and we hope we get that opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, are there those who are here to, uh, to oppose this proposal? If so, this is the time to come forward. And each of you have up to two minutes to speak.
Um, my name is Lauren Davis, and I actually live in the property directly to the left of this property, at, um, 1625 Shelby. I'm here representing, um, 12 neighbors in this area. I know that Chris had mentioned she had spoken to our neighbors, but since then, we've, um, had group meetings and have talked extensively, and all the surrounding neighbors do oppose this. Um, so, the purpose of approving this single property is to use the technicality in the law to reach the end goal of changing this property to commercial use. And to me, and to my other neighbors, it seems unethical to approve this request, knowing that the intention is not to preserve the house, but to allow Chris, the landlord, and not the resident, to increase her property value, so that she can sell it in the near future. And I know today she expressed that she did not have an interest in selling, but she's actually, um, spoken with me recently, because my brother was interested in purchasing, purchasing this house, and at that time, she was interested in selling. And that was only about, uh, three months ago. Um, we are particularly concerned that this change will not improve the surrounding property values, but actually decrease the values. This house has been residential since the 40s, and Richard here actually, um, grew up as a young boy in this area, and he can tell you that this does not, um, represent the, the history that she's claiming it to be. Actually, in the 40s, it was just a, a lady, I think her name was Winnie, that sold a couple of sodas and cokes in the front room. Um, it was not the, the grocery store that they're describing, and none of the neighbors really feel that this is actually something that will, um, preserve the historic nature of the neighborhood. In fact, we purchased this house specifically because we, um, were starting a family, and we wanted to live in a neighborhood environment, and I believe, uh, you can see, some of our other neighbors actually have children here, too, that live directly across the street, um, bought, knowing that this would be a residential property. And so, sorry, um, I guess I'll leave that...
You can finish your sentence if you'd like.
Okay. Um, just, I guess, in conclusion, I just wanted to say that, um, I'm not just representing myself, but really, we've talked a lot about this, and we're representing the group, and, um, and, and I hope that, that will be taken into consideration.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Hello there. My name is Edwin Wilmore. I am, uh, resident across the street, this is what I see out of my front window, at 1626 Shelby. Um, you know, I understand this is a two-tier process, and the ultimate aim is, um, something that's supposed to be really taken into consideration if this were to pass, and then a site plan gets proposed. So, it's actually very hard to properly address that, and once, if, if a historic landmark is granted in this property, then it's, in a sense, that's already giving credence to the eventual plans. The essential problem with, uh, that, at least myself, um, that I have with the, uh, wow, that thing just keeps ticking down, um, with the, uh, with the long-term proposal is not simply that, uh, there is a restored building of some sort. I mean, the character of the entire neighborhood is essentially 1900 and 1915 folk Victorians, like the one I live in, and both of my neighbors, and then 1915 and 1928, uh, craftsmen, uh, bungalows, which the primary house is in this case. And then, that's really the character of the neighborhood. About 20 to 50% down any block seems to be those structures. It's not, um, it's not rather unremarkable-looking squat, commercial buildings from the 1930s. So, when it really comes down to it, I know I'll talk to you guys again when we get to the next phase, if that happens, um, but as far as this being a critical component of the neighborhood context and structure, I, I mean, this is really a low bar that's being requested, or low bar being set for what is, um, a historic landmark. And I don't mind if they try to get it approved for rezoning because of the, uh, the structure itself, but the process they're going by is, it really seems like this is just a low bar for historic landmark. This isn't a landmark. Anyone in the neighborhood, I think, would tell you that the Church of Judah Kitty Corner is landmark. That's something you note, that, that's, and, or that the entire character of the neighborhood being from the early 20th century is something you note, not a kind of shabby, ill-preserved building that hasn't been promised to be actually preserved, only kind of thrown about ideas about it. I just think you guys should vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If anyone else is going to speak after, after you, they need to come up behind you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. No problem.
Do I have one minute to, to get a clarification between the zoning and the, we're talking about a zoning issue, an overlay issue and a zoning issue is the second tier, is that correct? Right now, we're just talking about the landmark overlay.
The zoning, the zoning stays the same. The purpose of this is not as a historic landmark, but as a neighborhood landmark, something that's important to the neighborhood. And so, the, the process was created in order for the neighborhood to identify areas, and they could be structures, or they could be something else that was important to them, and it was important for them to, to save that. So, that's the first, that's the first tier, and that's where we're at today. If it's determined that it's important to the neighborhood through the process and the council, then there's a second process to decide, okay, what would be an appropriate use that the neighborhood would accept, that would, would be appropriate to, as, in this building? So, in theory, if, if the whole process went through, and the building's torn down, then it reverts back to the zoning. It does not, the zoning does not reside with the land, the use of the property resides with this building only, and, and the conditions only, so...
Thank you for clarifying that. My name is Shannon Casey. I am, uh, the resident and owner at 1622 Shelby Avenue. I've lived there since 2006, um, have been in Nashville for 25 years. And, um, I am a preservationist at heart, so I, I love to see, um, uh, historic buildings be appreciated and protected. Um, I want to mention that on this block, we have 28 homes, and this home, this property, the very end of 16th, the intersection of 17th and Shelby, is the only property that may have ever been a retail space in the past. I think that's been clarified. Um, and so, in, just in terms of talking about the landmark overlay, I would like to mention that when I moved into this house, uh, 2006, my property, this home went under renovation maybe 2009. And I find it interesting that at this juncture, the landowner, property owner wants to talk about a landmark overlay on a building that was renovated in 2009, and now there is no evidence left of what was uncovered when they went through the, um, the renovation process. So, I think that would be a question I would ask this, uh, property owner, where are the artifacts from this property that would actually give it any merit to be, um, have a landmark overlay in terms of preservation and historical look? I say that, and I also want to mention, we have traffic woes on Shelby. Um, our council member's supposed to provide us with some background information on if it was an arterial street versus something else. We haven't gotten that information, but please keep that in consideration, that there are multiple accidents on the corner of Father, of Shelby and 17th. Um, just six, eight weeks ago, there was one. My boyfriend, uh, lives in the house, uh, is there regularly, sees them happen at least five or six, um, since the beginning of the year. Um, the church, um, has overflowed, parking goes all the way up 16th and 17th. If there were, this were to become a retail space, they would have to rely on foot traffic, because there is zero traps, parking spaces on the weekend for this particular street. Um, and I just think that this is a matter that needs to have a little bit more thought process. I would, um, recommend that you disapprove. If not disapprove it, please defer it, so that we can bring some adequate information to you, to, uh, point out that we are not, um, the same, uh, street as Fatherland and 17th that has background of retail space, or Eastland and Porter, or Woodland, um, and Five Points. We are very, very different. We don't have to share the same distinction as those areas. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll declare the public hearing closes. Oh, yeah, we have two more minutes for rebuttal, if you'd like to speak.
Okay. So, when we did do the renovations in 2009, the siding was up for a few short weeks, because it was very brittle, and not, we couldn't use it. It wasn't going to keep the, we couldn't preserve it. Um, we, we took some pictures, and so, so did the Historical Nashville WordPress blog. Um, I think that's where those photographs actually come from, from that article, where they wrote it up. It was a big deal. Um, it was, passersby were, would stop and talk to us, and, "Wow, that's awesome, that's great-looking, um, that used to be the old grocery store."
store. When we renovated, we also found some pictures of when it was an actual grocery store. So, maybe the retail of the groceries decreased toward the 40s, but it was an actual grocery store for the neighborhood. We still have the brittle siding, and we had hoped to preserve it. So, we've kept it dry and up, and we hope to maybe put it in the building somewhere, or even on the outside of the building. The front of it was totally not salvageable. We didn't do anything at the time because we just, we didn't, we had tenants in there, and we were okay with that. So, we now think that it's, the neighborhood has kind of grown in this direction. From Five Points over, the property values have increased. The back, behind us, used to be just terrible. It's gotten better. And we think that this preservation of this building, for the grocery store that it was, will actually help improve the historical quality of East Nashville. Do I need to address the parking? I think that's the zoning, rather. Okay. So, that's the answer to that, and thanks.
Thank you. The public hearing's closed at this point, and we're ready for discussion. Great. Or not.
So, I guess I have a few questions. I'm always trying to figure out what's going on. So, first, is what's, what's in, what's the current use of the commercial-looking building?
Currently, the, the property is zoned R6, so the only uses that would be permitted there would be one and two family dwellings. So, currently, no commercial would be permitted in this building.
So, it's just another residence, I guess. Are these two separate residents, or just one? I'm confused. Just one? Okay. Got you. I'm a Creve Hall dweller, so I get to East Nashville quite a bit, but not as much as I probably should. But, I'm getting too old to move over there. Where is the closest commercial? Can we go back to the, to the map, to the overarching map? Yeah, where's, where's the closest commercial, or commercial-type use?
You've got, you've got, you've got a scattering of these types of buildings throughout the neighborhood. Probably the closest actual commercial that I recall is 11th and Shelby, I believe. And I don't think there's any commercial between 11th and 16th. I may be wrong.
17th and Father.
17th and Father, and you have to go over that way. I was thinking about Shelby, yeah.
Got you.
Right. And there's a little, there's more of a commercial center at 17th and Father, a little more, more than just the one building on 17th and Father.
Okay.
It's more of a neighborhood center.
Okay. Well, let me go back to the, to the other picture that we've been looking at for a while. I mean, it, Rick, as you described it, it seemed like this is a very unique building, and it has a lot of history for the area, obviously. And it, I mean, for this particular purpose, I mean, it makes sense to me. But, but I also understand the neighbors' concerns about parking and, you know, if the end game is on the second piece of this, parking and some other uses.
No, I think that there are some, I think this is a unique piece of property, obviously a unique, unique building, and there's, I don't know how many. There are probably six in this entire neighborhood of these kinds of buildings, five or six of them. But, the critical issue, and this is as much for the neighbors as not, would be, will be the use. And I don't think that whether this is a neighborhood landmark or not, an intensive use of this building would be very, very difficult to do. I could see something much more in line with what we're seeing in terms of the maker community, where you have very, very low, if any, traffic. It becomes artists or something that is, somebody that either lives there or works there. If you think of Wedgwood, Houston area, or some of, some of the maker community stuff that's very low traffic, might be something that's appropriate. I think that, again, the stressing is that it's a two-tier process, and the fact that it's a neighborhood landmark doesn't guarantee anything that would go in here, that, it doesn't open it up. It allows anything that would be appropriate, but it doesn't guarantee anything.
Well, let me ask you that, then. If we change it to a neighborhood landmark, does that decrease the current use of it in any way, shape, or form?
No, they can continue to use it under the R6.
Under the R6. Okay, so it wouldn't...
It would just allow them the possibility of considering other uses.
Okay. Well, that answers my question. Thank you. I'd like to hear from another person.
I wonder if, before we continue our discussion, if you would just restate for us what, what the current, what the specific issue we're supposed to decide today is.
Okay. We'll go back to the slide that has. Okay. So, the issue today is whether or not this property meets the neighborhood landmark criteria as set forth in the zoning code. So, here we have the criteria.
Okay. So, we should just, you don't have to read it. We'll just look at that.
Okay. So, pretty much, is it important, is it important to the neighborhood and an important structure to keep?
I will say one thing regarding that. I mean, there has been some discussion about rezoning of this property, and at least from a staff perspective, we feel very strongly that the rezoning of the property would be inappropriate at this location to, mixed use or inappropriate, inappropriate, yes.
So, what does that mean for the grocery store, then?
No, the neighborhood landmark would be the only thing that would be a reasonable use, because it would protect the zoning character of the, of this. And if, in fact, the feature or the building, in this case, were removed, it still should be R6. It would not...
The underlying zoning would revert to that.
Right.
All right.
But, Rick, you're not...
Greg, you're there?
I'm, I'm done. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes.
You're not necessarily saying that the staff feels that only residential is an appropriate use here. And maybe we don't need to have that conversation, but that might...
Well, absent, let me say this. Absent the current building, the way it's built, which is a joint residence and commercial structure, if that were not there, if it were simply a house, we would not be supporting an alternative use or consideration of that. The only reason that staff has recommended this is because of the uniqueness of the, of the structure. And if you'll recall, some of the other neighborhood landmarks that we have had, and we had one down on Shelby, or at 6th and Shelby, the church there by the Family Dollar. That was a recent one, down about roughly at 6th and Shelby. And staff didn't support the rezoning of that, but they supported the preservation of the church building as a neighborhood landmark. Now, they have not come back in with any alternative use. The other more unusual one we had was out off Lebanon, Lebanon Road, where we had, if you'll recall, there was a large kind of estate home in the middle of what was a 1950s subdivision, and the estate home kind of preserved, was an original home in that area, and preserving that home was important, as opposed to tearing it down and putting in four or five more houses there. So, the commission supported that, and then they came back later to use that as, in effect, a home office and a small-scale office that preserved the character and provided the parking on site. So, these are all unique, and the determination the commission's making how's important, and this is really the gist of it, how important is the preservation of this structure? Is that an important thing to the, maintaining the fabric of the neighborhood?
Well, let's move around, and Andre, it's your turn.
You said something, Rick, right before start, Stuart, I read after he spoke, you said that, I thought you said that, that we're, one of the things we consider in changing to landmark use, I mean, the landmark overlay, that it would increase the possibility of uses. Does that, making landmark overlay inherently do that? Is that a, or is that just because...
Making it, if the council adopts this as a neighborhood landmark, it allows the planning commission, through the second process, to consider additional uses on this property, the purpose of which is to put the appropriate uses in this building that would allow its preservation and would maintain the neighborhood character. That's why, you know...
I just want to be sure, clear legally. I just wasn't sure that I didn't understand.
No, the uses are permitted by the, once, under the second phase of the process.
I'm sorry, Andre.
Go ahead.
Related to that, does the second step go through council as well?
No, it does not.
So, I just want to understand, too, because I don't, this is in historic zoning. It's a neighborhood landmark, and we call it a neighborhood landmark overlay district. It's the only thing I'm also confused about. We're talking about one building.
Correct. I mean, it was designed, there's a lot of possible features, and the term in there is features, which could be buildings. They could be historic open spaces. I mean, there's a lot of different things that were felt at the time that could be, be applicable here. I mean, we've, I don't know how many, I don't know if Melissa had a chance to look. It's probably been six or seven, maybe, of these is all over the last, since it was adopted in, probably 10 years ago.
But, so, when we, when we, when this was written, the whole idea, district, it could be applied to a single building. It could be applied to a whole neighborhood. It could be applied to sort of any type of...
Yeah, it's probably, it's more individual features, as opposed to, it's not envisioned as being a whole neighborhood. No, it's, it's actually...
There were districts, sort of threw me.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking about planning.
Probably, probably correct. It's, district's probably not a good term.
But, that's what we have. Okay. And the Historic Commission recommends, excuse me, recommends approval, meaning they think it's significant enough to want to protect it. So, that's of interest. And then, if we vote to approve it, just to say, therefore, it can't be torn down or significantly altered, the whole conversation could stop there. It's, we don't have to approve anything further.
No.
We're just protect tonight? We're talking about protecting the building?
You're talking about protecting it, and you're opening up the possibility to consider other uses than what the base zoning would allow. But, it doesn't guarantee anything. There was a church, the church at 9th and Russell was approved, a neighborhood landmark, probably six or seven years ago. They've never come in for any alternative use other than a church. So, I mean, in that case, there was discussion about maybe being condominiums or other things, and they've never worked anything out with the neighborhood that they could, that would, would even warrant bringing it to the commission for a plan.
Okay. I don't know.
All right. Phil?
I have just a curiosity question. Talking about historic, MetroHistoric approving it, will they be required, will they only be required to restore it to the way it looked previously with the, having to put the...
No, this is not, this is not either, this is not a conservation or a historic district, so that wouldn't apply.
It could remain just like it is.
We just asked their input, whether or not it was an area worthy of conservation.
Okay. Thank you.
Phil, do you have anything else? Hunter?
You know, I wish the map went out further, because some of you remember the tornadoes that came through here in 1998. Shortly after that, there was a group of, the American Institute of Architects brought in a group of professionals, experts, urban designers, landscape architects, transportation planners, planners, so on, like 10 experts from around the country. And they, they were here as part of the recovery plan for East Nashville. But, it was, the plan that they put together was really more about the redevelopment of East Nashville. And at that time, you know, East Nashville was a very different place than it is currently. And one of the things that they point out, and one of the things they pointed out was that they couldn't think of another place, not only in this city, but across the country, that had this pattern, which is almost a checkerboard of small neighborhood commercial, they call them 100% corners. And, and almost every two blocks, a lot, every two or three blocks throughout East Nashville, whether it's similar to this, as Rick mentioned, there's four or five of these, or four corners around an intersection. And, you know, since then, many of those have redeveloped, and, you know, now East Nashville's a very different place, and my kids can walk to the best ice cream in the city. We can walk to the best bakery in the city. My 11-year-old walks to get his hair cut. And, you know, and when those places redeveloped, there were a lot of fears about what might happen. And sure, there is additional traffic sometimes, and sure, there's, but it's interesting, in some of those places where there's a lot more traffic, the traffic's actually calmer and slower, and it's safer for pedestrians. So, I know we're getting, I'm getting into the use a little bit, which will be a conversation later. But, I do think this structure is very much a part of the neighborhood fabric and is a part of a bigger whole, and, and, you know, is unique in Nashville, certainly, and according to others, unique in the country. So, you know, as staff has recommended and the Historic Staff has recommended, I'm going to support the application.
Is there a motion? Well, we might want to hear from Walter. Councilman Hunter?
Yeah, I was just curious. Excuse me. I was just curious about the zoning. If we prove item C, which is reason to protect, and we say this discussion pretty much goes away, we prove it tonight, what kind of businesses would we be looking at when it comes up?
There are no, either guarantees that they can, any business approved, or to, for that degree, really any limits. It requires another public hearing and discussion on a various, on a specific business, specific proposal that can deal with hours, that can deal with type of business, location of parking, all of those things. What it says is, the purpose of the landmark overlay is to say, this building's important. And so, it allows an opportunity to explore other ways to preserve it. That's the only thing it is. And there's no guarantees that, they don't have a guarantee that they can come in and get a restaurant or anything. It has to be something that's worked out with the community, and then approved ultimately by this commission as being appropriate.
That makes it pretty safe, then. I will support that.
So, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve staff recommendation.
Any further discussion from the commission? All those in favor, vote aye. Those vote no. It's approved. Thank you. And that brings us down to other business, doesn't it?
No.
Yes, we don't need a quorum, and if you don't think your director's report is important...
The director's report is extremely important. I have provided it to you in writing, but more important, the only part of the director's report I want to highlight is that Ms. Logan contacted each of you about the need to set up an appointment, because we couldn't arrange a time for a group meeting, but an individual appointment to talk about the upcoming infill ordinances. And so, I'm sure that all of you have probably already contacted her to make your appointment, but for the, in the, in the chance that you had a busy afternoon, I would like to remind you to contact Carrie as soon as possible.
Good. That's a great report. We got it sometime earlier today. And some of us responded. Get busy. Is there, okay, what else do we need to do here? We're losing our quorum, but we can hear reports. Thank you, Hunter.
One other thing. We do have our mayor's, our budget report to the mayor. It's next Wednesday morning at 9:00 in the mayor's, mayor's press room, so.
All right. We should all attend.
Or at least make whatever contacts are strategic to anybody you know that controls the budget.
The chairman should attend. I think, I think he likes Jim. Okay, do we, now, let's see about Historic Zoning Commission. I think Hunter just left. Anything we need to know? All right. Board of Parks and Recreation.
Parks Board will meet next Tuesday, April 1st, no fooling, at noon, and there are no committee meetings, so it should be a relatively short meeting.
Well, do you mind, last week, last meeting, you made...
Wait a minute. Do we have, are we still using...? Yeah, okay. Don't forget to use your...
Two big, exciting announcements about land, and it was in a flurry, and I didn't hear it, and I'm guessing others might not have. Do you mind saying that again? I thought it was pretty exciting.
Ooh, I didn't bring my notes with me, but...
Well, just in general.
Essentially, there was one, I have got it on. Hello. It was, it was a, like a 38-acre area that was being given to us, and we accepted that. And I don't remember. It was in northwest Nashville, if I remember correctly, yeah. And it was an area that we didn't have much open space in, so it was very important that we get that. And yes, there were some drawbacks to it, and we discussed that at length, as far as some trash that's on it that had to be removed, and we talked about who was going to have to be responsible for that and those kind of things. So, yes, it would become a part of the park. There is one thing I want to add, talking about budgets. We are operating at parks with budgets that go back several years ago. And the amount of, of square miles, I don't know how many acres, like 3,000 acres that have been added to the system over the last few years, we operate, every year, we're asked to cut 3% or 5%, whatever it is. So, we're really in a pinch. Last year, when we had the retirement, the early retirements, we lost like 29 people, and we've only replaced, I think, six or seven of them, maybe off one or two. But, anyway, that gives you the idea. We can't, because we don't have the money. We are really in a situation where we need, and if any of you are, can be... We are really in a situation where we need, and if any of you are, can be helpful to us at the council level, please do that, because parks really, really need, you know, and even if you get people, there's, the money that we need for maintenance is not just the people, but it's, it's for equipment that we need, because we've got more parks, and we've got more greenways, we've got, which is fabulous. I mean, it's, we've got over 50 miles of greenways now, paved greenways, I'm not counting all the, just trails, raw trails. So we have got an exciting, exciting parks area, recreation, open space, and everything else, but we don't have enough money to run it like it should be, fair, honestly. And we're, we're going, you know, the talk is to shut down Shelby Park, and that's probably like...
Turn off your mic now.
That's probably a sacrilege. But, but it's, it's one of those things that we're having to face. I mean, that's not the only one.
Yeah, I think every department has suffered a great deal of, I know this department has over the last few years, and it's time for us to make our points with the mayor and council.
Yeah, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, we are now down to Executive Committee Report. I don't think we have one of those. Director's report, were you through?
I'm through.
And Legislative Update. Walter?
Yes, I think that the most recent thing, and Jennifer's involved in this, and we're going to do a meeting, we're having a meeting on the 31st, trying to explain some of the infill text amendments, and...
Oh, that's right.
That's going to be taking place in the council on the 31st, right after the planning commission meeting. That, which should be somewhere around 5:30.
So that's Monday?
Monday.
Okay.
Planning committee meeting, Mike.
Right. Planning committee meeting after that, and we'll try to clear up some of the questions that the council has on those text amendments.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I believe we're done. Oh, we're done.
That was a weak pick.